All right, um, call to order for just a heads up if anyone's got cell phones, please power them down. It's an interruption. Um, Mary Ann, go with the, um, oh, we gotta do the pledge first. Come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice for all.
All right, now you do the.
Scott, can you give us the anthem?
Oh, yes.
Here.
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 Here. All right, um, noting that there is a forum present, first order of business to hold a public hearing on 2018 tax levy. Due notice has been given of the public hearing on the 2018 tax levy and all other statutory requirements preliminary to the holding of such public hearing have been compiled with. The proposed tax levy was presented at the November board meeting. Uh, Mr. Boranich, and.
Boranich.
Boranich, I don't know if I keep what I read. And Dr. Skinkis will present and explain the 2018 levy and answer any questions from the board.
Mary Ann, can you please pull up page number eight from Board Book? Uh, maybe zoom in a little bit if you can so the audience and/or the community on TV can see. And the chart, uh, well, this will be the levy that we will be submitting to Cook County before December 28th. As we stated before, the key columns are those shaded in gray. The first column is what the district received, uh, from the county last year. The second shaded column is the levy the district will be submitting. And the third shaded column is the projection of what the district will actually receive. Every year in the state of Illinois, public school districts need to file a levy with the county where they're, they're sit within the taxing district. And it basically is a amount of money, uh, property tax dollars that we need to operate the school district. As long as it's under 5% request, you do not need to have a public hearing. Since I've been the superintendent, we conduct an annual public hearing just to introduce our levy. We are not requesting more than 5%, even though we are requesting 4.95 to make sure there's any new property or any new dollars that the district can receive, that will receive. The county usually limit, since we're in a tax capping district, we will normally only receive CPI or the inflation cost. So we're anticipating to receive about 2.1% and then they give you a small loss factor which accounts for any property tax dollars that were not collected. Mr. Boranich put together additional columns just to show you originally what we put in for and what we received back in 2017, payable in 2018, what we'll put in for this year, and then the projected, what most likely what will happen. And Scott, if I'm reading this correctly, for the operating funds, we're looking at approximately 400,000 in new money.
That is correct.
Okay. And that is in column K. There are some subnotes on, on the bottom of the levy. And again, this will be posted publicly, uh, once the board packet's approved, within the next 48 hours, Mary Ann, roughly. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Boranich and his calculations?
I do have a question. Scott, if you could please, uh, tell me about column M and column N. I couldn't quite figure that out.
Column M. Last two columns, Scott.
Okay, that's just, if you took our share that we're going to receive from the levy, the first, column M breaks down where the actual money is going.
That's the increase.
For the increase of money. So out of that 404,082% of it's gonna go to the ed fund. 1% goes to operation, I mean, special ed. 9% would go to the ONM. And then column N, that is what our percentages are per, um.
Like overall.
Overall.
Like the overall.
But there's no column there.
No going down?
I mean, where's, there's no column that says that, is there?
No.
No, okay, all right. So it's just the overall operating fund?
Yes.
For the funds, right?
Yeah, where the money's gonna be allocated to.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Left, right? No? This time, it's, a meeting will now be open for public discussions. All persons desiring will be heard at this time. Anyone come up and any questions on this? Seeing none. Um, no further comments. I now declare the public hearing on 2018 tax levy completed and the regular meeting will now proceed. All right, we have some recognitions to give out.
Correct. Uh, I can read if, uh.
You wanna hand out?
Sure, you betcha.
Dr. Skinkis is volunteering?
You bet.
Dr. Keen, you wanna read? You might, I have the names here at work.
I can read.
Okay.
I'll try.
Sure.
Phonetics, spelling is not included, so good luck.
All right, student recognitions. On Saturday, December 1st, 2018, RB hosted the Metro Suburban Conference Math Competition. Our mathletes did an outstanding job. They improved last year's overall score by 52 points. Congratulations, too, for Algebra I. Fifth place, Felix Jaquat. Fourth place, Madeline Ren.
Felix is here, hold on. Good job, Felix, come on up.
Come on up.
And you can stand stand up.
How do you say your last name?
You can stay right here till we read all the names.
What's the proper way to say it, Felix?
Uh, Jaquat.
Jaquat, okay.
And fourth place was Madeline Ren. Third place, Caroline Marrero. Second place, Grayson Pesorek. And first place, Ethan Dimano.
Felix, Ethan, good job. This is Algebra I, so we expect to see you up here annually now for geometry next year and Algebra II and then pre-calc or higher. You got it, guys?
If the team was first place and previously mentioned students plus Claire Schroeder was on the team.
Good job, guys.
Nice job.
Next was geometry. Tenth place was Ryan Locke. Sixth place, Isabella Linares. Fourth place, Peter Giannettos. Second place, Daniel Gonzalez.
Daniel.
Congratulations, Daniel.
Congratulations.
And again, our team was first place, including the previously mentioned students plus Jack Jamison and Xavier Ramirez.
Good job. Algebra II?
Ninth place, Jacqueline Damonte. Sixth place, Daniel Koewicki and William O'Brien. Third place, Ryan Power. And first place in Algebra II was Joshua Turner.
Josh is here.
Congratulations, Scott. Good job, buddy. Congratulations.
Good job, Josh.
And again, our team was first place, including, uh, the previously mentioned students above plus Grace Dipertalem Mayo, Claire Koewicki, and Benjamin Udelson. Congratulations.
Pre-calc?
Sixth place, Joseph Koewicki and Luca Malavich. Third place, Joseph Vitek. The team overall was second place, which included David Keen, Michael Coutts, Andres Resto, and Elise Wojak. Now, the freshman sophomore eight-person team. The team was first place. Ethan Dimano, Caroline Marrero, Grayson Pesorek, Madeline Ren, Daniel Gonzalez, Jack Jamison, Ryan Locke, and Isabelle Linares. And our junior senior eight-person team included, great, was first place, again, Grace Dipertalem Mayo, Daniel Koewicki, William O'Brien, Ryan Power, Michael Coutts, Luca Malavich, Joseph Vitek, and Elise Wojak. We have the calculator team. And again, first place, Felix Jaquat, Peter Giannettos, Jacqueline Damonte, Joseph Koewicki, and Andres Resto. And finally, it looks like our freshman sophomore two-person team for calculator was Claire Schroeder and Xavier Ramirez. And overall, RB took first place.
I still wanna congratulate Melissa Gordon, the math team sponsor. Chris and Shiva, is there an assistant that helps?
Kevin Davis.
Kevin Davis, so let's thank the sponsors. Uh, next, Dr. Keen? We got next second page.
We have staff recognition. So on December 1st, 2018, the following teachers found out they became a National Board certified teacher. National Board certification is the most respected professional certification for K-12 education. We are proud to add them to our current NBCT staff. Congratulations to James Baum.
Congratulations, Mr. Baum.
So are you the youngest one, Mr. Baum, to do this?
Middle. Middle child.
No, I mean, to get this national teacher.
I don't know, I don't wanna ask them their age.
She wasn't asking your age, let's just make that clear.
This is good, so early in your kids do this.
Good rest, my children. Just kidding, stay.
Also, Mark Helgason.
Good job, Mark.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Easy, I know.
Next is Allison Marsh. And finally, Suzanne Zimmerman.
Come on. Congratulations, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Well, why don't you, why don't you take a second, while we have a second, why don't you, um, explain to the board briefly what each year had go through to become nationally board certified?
I think the English teacher is best.
We had to do a handful of components. We did it over two years. Two components the first year, through a series of artifacts from our classroom and from our students, writing about what we do in the classroom. And then the second year, we actually had to record ourselves teaching. Our students had to sign agreements. So we submitted a couple of videos of ourselves writing about the decisions we made in the classroom, and then we all passed. The first component this last year, which was an exam within our specific rules.
How, the video has to be how long and it has to be uninterrupted teaching, right? For how long?
You know this, don't you? It's about 15 minutes.
10 to 15 minutes, uninterrupted.
Two separate videos.
Right.
With two papers each.
Yeah, I have to say, congratulations. I have teachers going through it right now. It is an extraordinary amount of work, an extremely rigorous process, so, so kudos to you guys. Great job.
Good job.
We have people relying on it, so. Congratulations.
And Suzanne, you did, you completed this process while you were having your second child?
Yeah.
Maybe it's all a blur.
I finished it all, so I think.
Wow. Congratulations.
Good. Thank you.
Congratulations. Chris, are we, we're just over 10, roughly?
So 10% of our staff?
Just a little bit over 10.
I feel like that's a great, like, one Portart staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's huge.
All right, we have, um, reports.
This is the part of the meeting that anybody that would like to sneak out.
I thought maybe wanna listen to the student association report, you know?
Listen to the budget part.
Bob's not here. Are we gonna be in here by ourselves? So, Scott. So, Bob?
Congratulations, everybody.
Student Association.
Student Association, do we have a student association report?
All right.
Come on up.
Come on down.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, ladies, are you just here to enjoy the meeting?
Oh, we're with, um, Girl Up, just to make sure.
Okay, all right. That probably won't happen till much later tonight.
Oh, boy, okay.
So you may just wanna check in for your, 'cause I know both of you wanna go home and study for exams next week.
Yeah.
So maybe Ms. Matana can tell you first thing in the morning?
Okay, yeah, we just wanted to make sure.
Are you, unless you're here to speak, you have public comments, are you here to do that?
No, no, we just wanted to make sure it would be brought up.
Yeah, that's, that's scheduled for closed session, but it's on the agenda.
Oh, it's closed.
Okay.
Definitely. Happy studying.
Is that what all four of you were here for? Okay.
Yes.
Just here.
Well, thanks for checking in. You're all coming up.
That's fabulous.
A woman's study.
Job. President has nothing to report. Superintendent, report.
Curriculum Advisory Council, no update. We did have our, Ms. Lundquist and Ms. Augustine did have a college and career internship meeting this week, so hopefully we'll have some more to report out second semester. Facilities Advisory did meet tonight in the board packet. You'll see approval for a bid on our pool air unit, our dehumification unit for the pool that was approved and life safety. We also did some work with our Facility Advisory Council and Joel Hatchy and Scott have done a nice job managing those projects and keeping them under budget. Finance Advisory approved the levy tonight. Personnel Advisory, there's no update. Policy Advisory Council met before this meeting and will have recommendations for the January meeting.
Principals report.
Uh, December has been and is always a very busy month for us. So last week, Shenanigans had their winter improv show, which you can always count on them for a good laugh. The Holiday Music Concert was also last week, and last night there was also a chamber orchestra concert, and tonight there's a magical concert out in the community as well. And then today, hopefully you had a chance to stop by the winter art show, which features our students' artwork from all of our first semester classes. So hopefully you were able to glance at that on your way into the board meeting. As you all know, final exams are rapidly approaching next week. They are Tuesday through Friday, and last week we communicated the new updated final exam schedule to parents and students. That can also be found on the RB website. And each day we'll have two finals, with the exception of Friday, December 21st, we'll only have a seventh period exam final. And to accommodate the families who may have been previously anticipating being out of town on that day, there is a form in the main office to complete so students can take that exam early before they leave, so they don't have to worry about it over winter break. And then lastly, we've been busy solidifying the plans for our future Bulldog Night, which is an event for incoming freshmen and their parents. It's moved up a little bit this year. It is on Wednesday, January 9th at 7:00 PM. And at this event, students from the class of 2023 get their placements and, as well as their test scores from the PSAT 8. It's also an opportunity for parents and students to touch base with an instructional coach if they have any questions, but also to learn about all of the sports and variety of activities that we have. Students can go around the school and the fieldhouse to talk to students that are involved in that. So we're really excited about that. And then shortly after that, um, at the end of January, um, 26th, they come and register for classes. So it's hard to believe that we're already talking about next school year, but we're excited to meet our, our future Bulldogs.
All right, Scott? Chief Financial Officer report.
All right, good evening. I'd like to highlight the 2018 November financials. If we go to Board Book page 19, that will summarize the monthly, um, report for November. Revenue was approximately 489,000 for the month. If we look at the key components as to what our revenue is, um, our evidence-based funding from the state was 173,000. And then we did receive some special ed payments for orphanage and room and board, which totaled roughly 110,000. We're at 45% of budget for the first five months with revenue on the expenditure side. Total monthly expenditures was 1.89 million. Our largest expenditure that we have is salary and benefits that accounted for 1.5 million. And our out-of-district tuition for November was 149,000. We were 45% of our budget for the first five months on the expenditures. And our operating fund balances at the end of November were 15.6 million total. If you back out the 3 million that's restricted in the working cash fund, brings us to 12.6 million for fund balance at the end of November.
Scott, what was the 198 in purchase service? I'm sorry, I should've asked you that this morning.
Uh, that could be earmarks, additional money, anything with transportation that we paid out for, for student and also Grand Prairie Transit.
Okay.
For special ed transportation. If we move on to Board Book page 20 and look at our financial statements, page 20 shows our beginning balance plus our revenue and expenditures for the first five months of If we move to the revenue side and just focus on that, um, you'll see that our operating funds are at 45% of budget. Last year they were at 54%. If you back out the $3 million working cash bond, it brings us much closer to exactly where we're at. We're actually about 3% lower than what we were last year if you back out the 3 billion working cash. The reason for that is the state has not made any payments for FY19. They made one pay, they made one payment, which was last year's last payment, and we're still waiting for, um, three payments from the state. So that's the reason why we're a little bit off on the operating revenue.
That goes back to the discussion we had with the board when we were doing our budget analysis and that our expenditures, you know, over a five-year historical that I did for the board, were within like 50 to 70,000 dollars. But this is an example of, you know, it's December and we haven't received any of this year's payments from the state yet. So, I mean, we're at their mercy. So hopefully we'll get three over the next.
Six months.
Six months. 'Cause we budgeted for four, correct?
Yes.
Three for this year and one from last year.
And one from last year. If we move on to the expenditure side, pretty much everything is matching exactly how we were trending last year, same thing with this year, uh, with it being at 45% of budget. Following the financial statements is the revenue expense report. There were some questions submitted by board members on it. The first question that was submitted was on Board Book page 23. That was under prior year levy accounts. We tried to make the prior year levy accounts as close as we could to reflect actual collection. We're at 98% of what was budgeted. Last year, under prior year tax collection, we were at 93%. So we were off pretty significant on that one, working with Forecast 5 and trying to get a better handle on it. We budgeted at 99% and at 47% collection, which has gotten us a lot closer to our projected budget amounts. And that goes for all of the funds that are out there. So if you went through Fund 10, Fund 20, Fund 40, you'll see that prior year levies are all sitting at 98%. On the same page, Board Book page 23, under student fees rental, uh, this is the account that the band uniform rental money comes in for. There has been additional students that are in the band program, and that accounts for the additional revenue. On Board Book page 23, on our registration fee, this account captures a $200 registration fee for all the students. Overall, for the first five months, uh, the fee collection is about average. There's still a lot of families that are on payment plans, and the business office just sent out collection notices to families. This account will continue to keep collecting fees, and by the end of the year, should be much closer to the budgeted amount of 290,000. Board Book page 27, under Special Education Transportation, uh, this is the issue with the state. We received one payment. That was the last payment from FY18, still expecting the three payments from FY19. We'll continue to keep monitoring that as we move through the course of this year. On Board Book page 36, um, under account codes 10-1400, 4100, 40608, and 10-1400, 4100, 40617. The 608 is the Perkins grant, and the 617 is the CTI grant. What happened here is there was an amendment made to the grant after the budget was already adopted by the district, and, um, with the amendment, we had to shift money from one account to the supply account in order to spend it. The main thing here is, is that CTI, we have a total of $33,000 for our allotment, and then Perkins has a total allotment of 35,000. Our CTE person knows exactly what their allotments are, and we will not spend over those. The main thing here is we need to spend the money so that we can put in for reimbursement. On Board Book page 44, under the debt service account, um, service charge on bonds, uh, it was budgeted 1,500 based off of prior year fees. The actual registration and paying agent fee for all five bonds that came in is 475 dollars per bond. We have five outstanding bonds. This budget amount was under budgeted and will be adjusted accordingly for the FY20 Those were all the questions submitted on the revenue expense report. And then the last report following the revenue expense report was the student activity accounts, and there was no questions submitted on student activity accounts.
I have a question for you. Historically, we've been, we have budgeted some big reserves for potential rebates, all right, or abatement.
Yes.
It looks to me like this year we've actually gotten hit with.
It was a reassessment year, so, um, there is more than normal with people that have filed the appeals.
So it's not a being, uh, uh, one of the big ones hanging, that was hanging out there?
No.
This is just based on.
Local.
Local reassessments as they come back and they get their house values.
Or Patreon, Gary.
Well, it's across, already it's crossed.
These are the revenue expense under the property tax.
You know, the other line of the, of the property tax.
Yes.
Which is a negative.
Mm-hmm.
Right, in case to count for. All right, so we should probably note that in our budgeting process.
That's what I'm asking, what page, Scott?
Reassessment years.
Um.
Page 23 of the original levy?
No, 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 it's on the revenue expense.
So for example, on page.
Page 23.
Education fund, the third line of the revenue.
Other.
Which is education, yeah, levy, other.
We had 200,000.
We had, that was normally we budgeted, you know, we budgeted normally.
Right.
Higher this year. So for those who are gonna stay on the board, would note that in your budgeting process, what year the, the assessment.
You have that also, the one under operations, you have that under.
Yes.
So I think totally did 300.
Yeah. But for example, the transportation one is over budgeted already, I think.
Okay.
So, just a note. All right, thank you. Discussion information items. Look to my left, does it have any discussion? Or you guys have any questions, Scott? Before I move on, I mean, no? All right, discussion? No? How about to my, no? Nope. FOIA requests.
One, on the companies who bid for the pool air handler replacement equipment, and that response is attached.
It's an opportunity for visitors to have stay. It's an opportunity for visitors to have statements, seeing if we get more visitors. We're going to move on to additional discussion items.
None?
None.
No.
Do the consent agenda, action items, the approval of the minutes. Somebody want to?
In a motion.
Motion, read the motion.
It's at the end, right?
It's actually on, if you could see the screen, it's up on the screen.
It's up on the screen.
Okay, I'll read it. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-O-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meeting held on November thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, open and closed, adopts the tax levy, the twenty-eighteen tax levy as presented and amended in the December eleventh, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
All right, do we have any discussions on either of those two items? Anyone? No? Okay, let's go for the vote.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
And Mr. Rich.
Yes. Old business, life safety items, capital improvements.
So this is the bid for the air handler equipment. Remember, we put this in about eighteen months ago in the life safety amendment that we submitted to the state. At that time, we had our architect and engineer had a project cost of about six-hundred thousand dollars in there. As you can see, it came in at seven-eighty-five. Now, in that eighteen months, between some of the cost of steel, some labor cost, as well as the cost of the units, remember, when we submit those amendments, we're at the mercy of the state. And so you have to submit a reasonable amount of, like, replacing like with like, but at the same time, we need to make sure that we complete the project. So the new design is actually going from one giant unit to two smaller units and so that the pool will be split in half and have a unit working for each of the halves of the pool. This way, in the event that should you have mechanical failure of one of the units, you still have some airflow being provided by the second unit until the other unit can be repaired. We do have to replace a lot of duck work and we will have to, there will be a crane involved to get the old unit off and then to put the new units on. So we are, we do have money within the life safety dollars that we received from the bonds to cover the difference here. Like I said earlier in the meeting, Joel and Scott have done a nice job keeping the other projects under budget. So the other recommendation is to approve the base bid and I will also tell the board it will be closer to eight hundred because I am recommending alternate number two, if you look at page eighty-six. Alternate number one, which would be a twenty-five, if you could see the numbers in bold, Mechanical Concepts of Illinois, their base bid is seven-eighty-five. If you want to go with a Dektronics unit, not Dektronics.
Suresco.
Suresco, Dektronics is a scoreboard. Suresco unit, you could take twenty-five thousand off. However, that's what we currently have, Suresco, and we've had a lot of service issues over the last, my years for sure. So we thought it would be better to stick with the units, the other two units that are being supplied, not doing the deduct. And then, which is a Dektron unit. And then the fourteen thousand add-on would be to repaint the ceiling and all the duck work to match existing wall paint. And so basically, the biggest piece of that pool next to the actual pool with the water is the dehumidification system. And so that duck work does go throughout the pool area and is visible to everybody using the pool, including spectators and visitors. So the facilities advisory council, and I believe it'd be a good idea to give it a facelift and make sure all the paint matches and to paint it accordingly. Are there any questions?
So, Kim, these contractors, they all bid on the same equipment?
They all bid on the same equipment.
Okay, so.
And they all attended a pre-bid meeting and they all had to meet the bid specs and the insurance and bond requirements.
All right, what kind of warranties come with those?
Assurance bonds. The units, I think, are only twenty, either twelve or twenty-four months on the units.
Yeah, one or the other. Not a hundred percent sure. Twelve or twenty-four is correct.
And the work, we have assurance bonds on the contractors. We went through this and Wes can talk about this a little bit too, when we met with the engineer. The life of those units, it's almost kind of like your water heater in your basement. You know, I don't know if anybody's ever had to replace a water heater, but pretty much, when those things say ten-year warranty, usually within a year of that ten-year warranty, you'll start seeing the drip out of the bottom of the water tank. Very similar at these, as the engineer said at the facilities meeting, this is the only air handler unit the district has that runs twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five.
Yeah.
It never shuts down. So dividing that work over two units is a better plan, you know, and while we're using a different kind of flow instead of gas.
Yeah, we're kind of reversing, well, we're reversing the flow, which is going to help the airflow.
Right.
And, you know, they're saying that with two of them, you'll go less, like, the one now has just, it's just overworking itself, right? Because A, it's a little smaller than it's supposed to be, and then it's working twenty-four, seven. So it's just, so it took its, really, its lifespan and cut it in half, so.
So if we went with a.
Went with two of them.
If we went with a single one, would the price be lower because you wouldn't have as much duck work, or am I mistaken?
That is, you could, you would be lower.
It would be lower because you're buying one bigger unit instead of two smaller.
Right.
And you wouldn't have to reduck either. Right.
Yeah, you could probably, if you didn't change the duck work, but it's not, it's not rated.
The problem is, is there's not a unit that's supposed to be big enough for that space. Because when they remove the, originally when that space was designed, they removed the drop ceiling.
Right.
To save money and they use that in other parts of the addition. But what you didn't account for is the amount of cubic footage now that you have to dehumidify.
Dehumidify. And that's been nothing but problems for eight years. My kids have swam Little Park because of that. My, you know, kids have been sick because of it. It's worth doing it right, I think.
And the other question, didn't we have to repaint? And didn't we just paint something in there like three years ago when we redid the duck work and?
We did not repaint, they painted that duck.
I thought we had to paint the, the.
We did not expend any.
The metal, the metal, the.
Right, we did not expend.
Steel girders.
We did not.
Because they were rusting.
We did not expend any money on that project. White and Company, who fixed the spectator seating and installed additional return vents, painted those ducks and anything within the areas, they touched them up, but they did not complete the entire ceiling. Because we did not drain the pool, the pool will be drained and scaffold so that the entire ceiling can be repainted.
So who's going to oversee this so that we don't have the same issue we had last time?
So we are GCing, this is a general contractor and then between Joel and the engineer and the architect.
Okay.
The three of them will do the weekly walkthroughs.
So we're not going to get where the bend even misses the hole there, the connection?
Correct. Well, that's the other reason of why you want to go with two smaller units so that you can have, you know, because they helicoptered the other unit on and they dropped that over the hole. And that's why I think the hole was off by a few feet, two feet we missed. So we should be in a good spot.
So is everything internal or is it going to be external?
The only thing that's external are the two units on the roof, but I believe we're using our boilers instead of using a gas line on the roof.
Right.
We're running, we're using our current boilers because we have four boilers. On a coldest day of the year, we only use three, so we're, we have more than enough capacity in our current boilers, so that saves some money as well. And not having a roof fire unit.
So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to replace, we're going to have to patch the opening, current opening?
Yes, yes.
Make two new openings because I would imagine they're going to be in different places.
Yes.
Right in the place, right?
Be here, there.
Yeah.
And we had involved, because there's parts of the roof that are still under warranty, so we involved the warranty company.
So are they going to be offset on both ends of the, so that?
No, they're kind of set right in the middle, offset in the middle, so one will do, if you, if you imagine they're, like, this, this, this side, this, this side.
We also are, we had Nycor come out and ComEd come out and we applied for all rebates to see because there should be some energy savings from going with these high efficiency units and using our own boilers instead of having the gas on the roof. So we had both come out and see if there's any additional rebates we qualify for.
Okay. So the placement was, I understand when both are run and it makes sense to do that, but that isn't very effective if one of them goes down and.
Well, if one goes out, you're going to have to get the other one fixed, for sure.
Right, because if you're blowing one way, you're only going to have at the side, as opposed to doing an offset, right, where you can.
Yeah, but right now, if it goes down, you're kind of out of business.
Get nothing.
So this one, you, you lip along, basically.
But it's directing it towards one side only, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I don't think that they have them where they can connect them and you could do the whole thing.
Well, I'm not saying.
Yeah, maybe it wouldn't work effectively. If it was do one side and that would carry you through until the mechanic came out and fixed it, right?
All right. We need a, we need a motion.
I still have a question. Did we put another unit in the spectator area before?
So what was determined with all the work that I did with the contractors and architects and our current engineer was that even with the standalone unit, there was not enough airflow for that spectator area. So White and Company, twenty-ten, the engineers that did the two thousand and six through nine project, to avoid any issues, provided a supplemental unit just over the spectator area.
So we're going to get rid of that?
That's staying. This is strictly to help with over the pool. So now, between those two and the supplemental, we should be.
Yeah, supplemental.
We should be much better.
Okay.
Much improved.
And how's the supplemental holding out?
The way I understood, supplemental runs off the gym, right?
Correct. We have no issues with the supplemental.
It's doing fine.
Right.
Okay. So was that, just, just one more, so are these two rated with the supplemental?
The supplemental.
Or is it, can these survive without the supplemental?
These two can survive without the supplemental.
And they can handle all the air.
We were doing, just, just, it's recommended that you do four air changes an hour.
Yeah.
And we were just meeting four air changes.
I understand, I understand, we weren't, it wasn't very healthy.
Now we're going to six or seven air changes an hour. So we'll be more than enough.
So is one of the units blowing and the other one's pulling?
Nope, they're both blowing.
They're both blowing. We're just, we're going to take it where, how does it go now? It, it, it comes down on the backside and goes towards the stands. It's coming, we're reusing the duck work that is the intake below the stands, it's pushing it across the pool, up the back wall, and then the intake will be kind of up on the wall.
Basically reversing the flow.
Yeah.
Kind of.
But we're reuse.
But we're using all that stuff.
What is now the, the intake is, we're blowing. And that, that's actually how it should work because it's going to come, instead of, like, right now it's two going across the whole pool, now it's like a ten or something across to even flow and it's, and it's closer to the water. Still going to be warm in there. I mean, it's still eighty-two degree water.
Kim?
All right.
Let's move faster.
We got somebody to read the.
Sure. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-O-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves Mechanical Concepts, Inc. of Illinois with a base bid price of seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars for the pool air handler replacement as presented in the December eleventh, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Any other comments, questions, no? Okay, go for the vote.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
And Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right. Education, old tour.
We, with the calendar changes, Kristin needed to amend something, so.
This is the second.
Is this a JV one?
Yes.
JV.
Okay, so we had to also add it on the JV one that we presented to the board in November.
This has been updated to reflect more accurate costs and JV cheer team did qualify in their last competition, so they are eligible to go to the ICCA State Tournament in Springfield on January fifth and sixth. And the cost per student actually dropped, so previously it was a little over two-hundred dollars and it's now a hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents.
You want me to read the next one?
Yeah.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-O-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the educational tour for the JV cheer team on January fifth and sixth, twenty-nineteen, to Springfield, Illinois for the ICCA championship as presented in the December eleventh, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
All right, go for the vote.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right. New business, payment of bills.
Okay, there were some questions submitted on the payment of bills. First question submitted was on Board Book page ninety-eight. The first one was American Red Cross for eleven-seventy-six. This was supplies needed for the CPR portion of health classes. Supply costs are covered by student fees that are collected. On the same page, Arigo Mechanical for five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five. This was a replacement cost for a burner jet assembly for the Fieldhouse Unit, McQuay Unit. On the same page, under assurance.
Scott, what is that?
It's the rooftop unit that heats and cools the Fieldhouse.
Oh, good.
I do, I don't want to go into detail on the burner jet assembly, I'm not an expert, but.
Okay.
That's what, that was the part that was needed to be replaced.
What's the next page?
Board Book, same page, ninety-eight, under assurance for twenty-four-seventy-one. Per our SLO agreement, the district must carry specific liability insurance. This is the annual premium to have the necessary coverage. On Board Book page one-zero-one, under Environment Consulting, thirty-five hundred dollars for an asbestos inspection. This inspection is required by the district to have every three years. Board Book page one-oh-two, under Forecast Five, for six thousand dollars for five-site license. This software license gives the district access to comparative financial data throughout the state. It's very different compared to ECR. The district uses it to analyze local compensation, benefit trends, view revenue expenditures, trends by fund, function, object. There's a variety of things that are used, using this site to help out with collective On Board Book page one-oh-five, transition payment for fifteen thousand. This is a special education placement settlement. All the terms of the agreement were met and the payment will be received. Board Book page one-ten, Mary Todd Hunter. There was a question submitted, how come some are being paid by board bills and some are being paid by interest? Basically, what happens on this one is I'm just paying them based off of when I receive the invoices. There was two separate invoices from Mary Todd Hunter for doing seaming of dresses for the choir on that, and based on when I receive the invoices, I try to determine, okay, should I pay her with interest or do I push it off to the board bills? And they, that's why there's a difference between one on interest and one on board bills.
Mary's a retired employee who also is a seamstress and she charges the students only ten bucks to either fix their dress or their costume, which is a lot cheaper than taking it into.
Absolutely, to a tailor.
Correct.
And those were all the questions submitted.
There's a motion to approve the bills, please.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-O-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the December eleventh, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Go for the vote.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
And Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, school calendar. All right, school calendar.
Okay, so this is the, to amend the current 2018-2019 school calendar to the snow day of November 26th. Kristin mentioned earlier, we'll be extending, uh, final exams through Friday, December 21st. We're holding makeup exam days on that Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so students, um, that had travel plans have plenty of time to get a makeup exam in. And so, I need the board to amend the current calendar.
Okay, could we get somebody to read the resolution?
Sure. Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby amends the 2018-2019 school calendar providing for extending the final exam period to December 21st, 2018, and beginning winter break on December 24th, 2018, thus making up for the snow day on November 26th, 2018, as presented in the December 11th, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
If you get a second?
Second.
All right, go for the vote.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. Ski trip, educational tour.
Kristin?
Um, so at the September 11th meeting, the Board of Education approved a ski trip to Wilmot Mountain. Um, I'm requesting two modifications to the original request. Um, the first was, the trip was initially scheduled for Friday, December 21st, so now that it will be in session, uh, students can't go that day. So we'd like to reschedule it, um, to Thursday, December 27th. Um, and then the second modification would be to go to Devil's Head instead of Wilmot Mountain. Since board approval, uh, Wilmot Mountain no longer has group rates, and are not able to honor the group rate, uh, that we had initially, uh, put forward. And so as a result, the trip significantly more expensive than, um, we initially planned, and we've received some student feedback that it would be a little too costly. Um, and so, the new proposed date and location would allow students to go, um, at a much more reasonable rate. The trip would be fifty to sixty dollars, depending on whether or not students, um, needed to rent some equipment. Um, and so it's a, it's a very reasonable rate, and, um, you know, students are excited to go on the trip if it's possible.
Is there a resolution here?
Sure.
Read it.
It's Page 126. Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the modifications to the previously approved ski trip, ski trip educational tour, changing the date from December 21st, 2018 to December 27th, 2018, and the location from Wilmot Mountain to Devil's Head as presented in the December 11th, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Okay, go for the vote.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. Disposal of surplus personal property?
We do this every December. Um, this is disposal of any district property. There was a question submitted about if we had sold anything, had we provided a report. We have not sold anything, a lot of this stuff is very, very old and...
Nobody wants.
Correct.
Are, like, the desktops being recycled, or is any of this, I mean, are we just throwing it in the trash?
Yeah, no, this is like, this is like, three generations ago desktop. We save keyboard pieces, we save mouse pieces, this is...
Uh, I know, but it gives me anxiety to just put it in a dumpster, sorry.
Do you want it?
No.
Put it in your house?
Yeah.
No, I already did that.
All right, can we get a resolution?
Sure. Um, this is a long one.
Whereas the superintendent has recommended, and the Board of Education has determined that certain surplus property listed on the attached Exhibit 1, surplus personal property belongs to the district, is no longer needed for school purposes and should be sold. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that the sale of the surplus personal property in accordance with Section 10-22.8105 ILCS 5/10-22.8 at a public or private sale is in the best interest of the district. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Riverside Brookfield School District 208 Cook County, Illinois as follows. Section 1, that the superintendent is hereby authorized to dispose of the surplus personal property by public or private sale in a manner which is in the best interest of the district. Section 2, in the event that any such property should remain unsold, the superintendent may dispose of it in a manner which is in the best interest of the school district. Section 3, the superintendent shall report to the board the items sold, the buyer, and the amount received for each item.
Second.
I do have a question, are any of these computers, um, with admin computers, desktops? The only concern I raise is...
They want it wiped out.
They get totally wiped out, so there is a procedure to make sure there's no school, student, yeah.
I think you guys asked that last year.
Yeah, I know, I just gotta ask it again.
No, it's good.
All right, go for the vote.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, we have, uh, Airmark contract extension.
So, I'm, I'm working on this, and there's some things that still need to take place. Uh, I'm trying to see if we can get a few dollars more from Airmark. Also, we have, um, some terms, and our attorney wants to get updated, because some things may have changed over the time since we did the original contract. The key component here is that this should take us through our life safety work, as well as, uh, the projects that we have. Airmark has one more year left on their contract, um, but I don't think it'd be a good idea to transition with their job that Joel has done on all our projects, and as the Facilities Council saw last week and reported on, you know, we have done a lot of stuff locally with local contractors in order to come in under budget and have the additional money to do the pool and some of those things. I think it'd be important to get through, uh, 2022. Also, in return, Airmark does have a grant program when you, when they do new contracts or extensions. Um, so at the minimum, we would be expecting at least $50,000 back in a grant that we can use to, um, renovate or replace the scoreboard and clocks in the athletic outside, or outdoor athletic complex, which were from the original 2006 project, and no longer are some of the parts available.
The original Airmark contract was for how long?
The last extension the board did was five years.
All right, now we're, this is, because there's no, I don't see...
So there's, this is a, um...
Two-year?
Two-year extension to make sure we get through all our work.
Two-year, all right.
And, uh, so what I'm asking for the board is, if you can see, um, I, I need, um, I actually would ask to amend this resolution, um, so that the resolution allows the superintendent to finalize terms and details with district legal counsel in Airmark, so more or less, um, you know, approving the general terms and concept of the contract. So Marion has it written right, I just wanted to make sure of that.
For, for, for the, for the new, the board members who were not on the board at the time of the last, uh, contract, could you explain what Airmark gave the, um, the school in regards to signing the five-year deal?
Um, we did a five-year agreement with them last time, and they gave us roughly $165,000 to help support our one-to-one initiative in our first year of Chromebook payments. So they've been a, a good ally to the district. Anybody that's worked with Joel, whether it's been in facilities, I know Dr. Keen worked on the two projects, especially the stadium. Wes has experience. We have an advantage of having a facilities manager who treats the place like his home, and he treats his mon, the money we give him in these projects or budgets like it's his own budget.
Right.
And so he's done a nice job.
And the, and the contract escalate, what were the escal, the yearly escalations on these?
We actually changed it so that it matches the same CPI rate that applies to our levy, and if we pay it in one, one installment, um, which we have been doing for the last several years, we get an addition, we get an additional one or two percent back. So it's, it's been a fair deal for both parties. So again, uh, the, the, the board will be approving the general terms or concepts of the contract and allowing me to do the final terms and details with district legal counsel. I don't know if that should, I think that should maybe be mentioned in the resolution, to be finalized by the superintendent and district legal counsel.
So you're asking for us to approve terms and cons, uh, concepts, uh, subject to final council's input? Basically giving you the authority, leaving you the authority to approve what those concepts and...
So the red, so all the red line changes that you see in the amendment that I provided are from our council. So we're anticipating some pushback. But once I can get this finalized, I'd, and if I can, you know, have the general approval of the board, I'd like to get this moving, so that if I do need to purchase a scoreboard before the spring season, I can get that completed.
Hey, can I ask, uh, Tim had some comments on this, didn't he, in his reply?
He did, so...
Is he happy with it?
Uh, yeah, I mean, Tim's not our district counsel.
I know, I know.
So we should probably, but what, uh, Tim was actually saying is that he thinks that actually we're asking, uh, we're being too specific in some of our requests. But that's why our attorney wanted to put this stuff in there, um, because we know that there'll be some pushback or that we'll have to tighten up the language or clean up the language, um, but this was our, so that's all Tim was saying, like, hey, prepare for some pushback on Section 3 or Section... I'm not sure what specific side of the section it was.
So on a, the grant given to us with the five-year, worked out to how much a year?
Roughly $32,000. But that was because we took it out for five more years, we're only taking it out for two years.
And so this is $25,000?
Roughly, I'm gonna see if I can get...
And we've had CPI increases on the, in the interim?
Correct.
You're thinking we should get more money?
Of course.
Of course.
Why go backwards?
I will see what I can negotiate.
All right, um, how do we, who's able to read the, uh, resolution with, uh, how Dr. Skin Kiss wants it read?
I'm not sure what it's supposed to say.
So I think we're saying...
Is it supposed to say tentative agreement, or is it...
No, I would say...
It approves the, something to the extent that we're gonna approve the contract extension subject to final, um, you know, final, um, input from our council...
And superintendent.
And superintendent. So you may wanna read that with, with Airmark for the services through subject, through, you know, 22, and then subject to... Who wants to volunteer and read it?
Mona's got it. She's got it, she's going for it.
Let's see, let's see if we can do this. Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the terms cons and concepts of a contract extension with Airmark for custodial and maintenance services through June 30th, 2022.
Subject to?
Subject to the approval of...
Superintendent.
Legal counsel for the district and the superintendent as presented in the December 11th, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second.
Go for the vote.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, um, school calendar, 2019, 2020.
First read for the board. Um, so a couple things to bring you up to speed. With the new evidence-based funding, some things have changed in regards to the school code. There used to be a requirement that you had to have at least 175 pupil attendance days, and those pupil attendance days had to be a minimum of 300 minutes. Now, the requirement is 176 pupil attendance days. However, you're no longer to meet the required 300 minutes. The school district, the union, um, the staff can determine what is effective learning days for the students. Um, so the only change for us is we'll add an additional day, and probably, uh, the way we're going to accomplish this in the first draft that you're seeing is that we'll have exams over four days both semesters. Currently, to meet the 300-minute requirement, we were taking, making kids take three exams a day, and that's a lot. So we'll extend exams over four days and have a makeup period, an additional, you know, it could be some additional time for review, uh, for the teachers. It keeps our semesters balanced. The other changes that I'd like to point out, we met with the union, we met with the instructional coaches, the building administration. We were looking at, uh, the effectiveness of our institute days. So one thing we're gonna do is, uh, we're recommending to the board, they approve, uh, in this drafted calendar, we'll bring the final for approval in January. We're gonna put two institute days right at the start of the school year, uh, so that there's more time to accomplish, um, school business and get ready for the opening of school. The institute day that we pulled off the schedule was the one that we used to hold late in April. And it was to more or less accommodate student attendance during prom. But it wasn't necessarily the most effective institute, because it was already in the last month, the last four weeks of school. So what we, now that we have the 300-minute requirement lifted, we can conduct a half a day of school on whatever day we've, weekend prom falls on. Students can be dismissed at noon, and we could still have our 176 pupil attendance days and put the institutes more in the... All three of the four institutes will then be for a semester where we can implement change, if there's anything that needs to be changed or do more professional development. Spring break is the 23rd of March, and winter break would then start, um, Monday, December 23rd. I met with the feet, all three feeder schools and shared our winter break and summer break, and so they are aware of those, and they usually, in the last eight years, we've done a good job aligning our spring breaks and winter breaks, uh, to accommodate families in the community. Any other changes, I don't think, the district holidays are listed on there. District closed April 10th is the, is Good Friday, that's, it's just a normal district holiday. Uh, the other holidays are mentioned above. So you can see, we have 176 student attendance days, five emergency days, four institute days, and we will still keep parent-teacher conferences. We looked at possibly altering the parent-teacher schedule, we didn't wanna move too much too fast, so we can revisit that next year.
All right, um, we'll vote on that next...
Yeah, in January, this is the first read for the board.
Press, uh, plus policy issue 99, first read?
Policy council met today, we'll have recommendations in the packet for, uh, the January meeting.
Okay, um, matters for closed session. Personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, sale or lease of property, pending or imminent litigation, collective negotiation, school safety, and confidentiality of closed session minutes. Visitors, um, seeing no visitors in the audience, um, we'll move on. There were no requested discussion items. Any items for consideration for future meetings? That's my lap, any items? All right?
Nope.
All right, could I get a resolution to move into closed session?
Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiation, school safety, and confidentiality of closed session minutes.
Could I get a second?
Second.
All right, go for the vote.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Towner?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra? Yes.
Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, how about, uh...
Good job, everybody.